Good evening. I call this August 26, 2024, meeting of the Slovenia Board of Education to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Hey, I gotta do a roll call.
Oh, sorry. Never mind, sit back down. I screwed up. Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Huffman?
Here.
Ms. Conklin?
Here.
Ms. Lavelette?
Here.
Ms. Raffeler?
Here.
Now, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda tonight is the election of a vice president in light of the resignation of former Vice President Jill Johnson. I would like to nominate Kim Conklin.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Kim, are you willing to serve in that role?
I am. Were you afraid?
Yes. Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you, and we are with you, Dr. Motley.
Thank you, Ms. Lavelette. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. I just want to share a few highlights. What a fantastic week we had last week in Slovenia. It was the first week of school where our children were, had a staggered start and engaged in a lot of activities in order to get acclimated to the demands of the upcoming school year. We had the showcase of a lifetime for Slovenia as we enjoyed the Crosstown Classic Friday with the game between Northview and Southview. We also had the privilege of our, if you will, inaugural opening of the Northview Stadium with the concession stand, which was lovely. The lines were rather long, but I have to tell you, our parents and students and fans, they waited in line to support our boosters, but it was a great new building, and also the visitor stands were wonderful, and the brand-new track was highlighted. Also during the Crosstown Classic, something that was most touching, at least for me, this is the second year of the foundation, our district alumni foundation for Slovenia Schools, made it a Military Appreciation Night. And we had the privilege and honor, he almost brought me to tears, to recognize one of our very own Wildcats. He graduated in the year 2001, and his name was Matthew Drake, and had some severe injuries and trauma while he served in war, I want to say in Iran. But it was touching to hear what a warrior this young man is and how he fought back to the point where he had to learn to walk, talk, eat, all independently, and to fight back to be where he is today after such a severe TBI. It was an honor to recognize him Friday night on the field. It was just an, I'm getting chill bumps thinking about it, talking about the ultimate sacrifice and fighting to come back to continue to other, also help other veterans who are struggling. He works to encourage those veterans who have also experienced TBIs and other injuries. So it was an honor for us to acknowledge him. We also had our Athletic Hall of Fame recipients on the field Friday night during halftime. It was a fabulous event. The hockey team is always entertaining, always entertaining. They were a great group of guys there. And then Saturday, we actually had the Athletic Hall of Fame luncheon, which I know several of you, I know several of you here in the room were in attendance, and that was another great time there at our Slovenia Country Club. So just showcasing Slovenia this past week, and we will continue to do so this Friday, we will dedicate the Southview Football Field to Jim Macy's Field, sponsored by Mercy Health. So we're excited about doing that and continuing to celebrate the excellence we have here in Slovenia. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you. And we have some commendations today?
Yes, we do. I would like to recommend for approval the recognition of achievement, which is item 4.1. We have several Northview and Southview students that are on the agenda tonight, as noted. We have Northview students who had the scored 26 and above on the ACT. That took place in June. And also, we had some students' ACT scores that were 26 and above that tested in July. We also have some SAT scores here on our agenda, and recognizing these students who tested 600 or higher, they also took that assessment in June, and those are all from Northview. And we also have some Cougars on the agenda for testing higher on ACT and SAT this past summer. So congratulations to those students for really showing what they know on these national assessments. We are very proud of them, so I recommend commendation of the students as listed.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Any comments or questions? Congratulations to the students. Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you.
We are now at the portion of our agenda for public participation for items that are on the agenda. And there's no one signed up for public participation for items which are on the agenda, so we will move to Mr. Koch.
All right, so we'll have a consent agenda. So we have first up, minutes of previous meetings from July 22 and August 12. Treasurers' report for the month. We did get our August Lucas County tax settlement. It was up about 1%. As I mentioned in my update, we did have some, a decrease in public utility, so I'm diving into that and some delinquent taxes there on the public utility side, or it would have been about $300,000 more. So I'm working through that with Lucas County and the vendor as we speak. Almost ready to issue our popular annual financial report, something new we're doing I've been talking about. Hopefully, we'll have that ready to go in September. 6.3 availability of funds, a few checks we need to approve with the changeover in the new fiscal year. 6.4 is the senior class transfer from leftover Northview class of 24 funds going into Mr. Pugh's 018 Principals Fund at Northview. 6.5 annual approval for cellphone payments, and then 6.6 is our athletic support personnel rates for the 24-25 school year.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 6.1 through 6.6.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Dr. Motley, we are back to you.
Thank you. I recommend proudly item 7.1, the appointment of interim director of Instructional Technology, which is Mr. Darren Estelle, who's back here with us today. Welcome, Darren. It is my pleasure to recommend him to serve as the interim director for this position, as noted on the board agenda.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions?
I have a couple of comments, if I may.
You may. I was just gonna say, congratulations. Know you'll do great, and now we're gonna call you when we need someone.
More than we already do.
And thank you.
I meant the poor boss.
I just want to say that Darren and his team, Jody, Steve, all of them, Tyler, everybody, I don't want to list them all because I'll forget someone, but I just want to say, they have worked very hard to fill the gap and to have a seamless transition what is traditionally the most difficult, chaotic, busiest time of the school year. So I know Jody's like, "Yeah, it is." And I know that the techs have been working hard to meet the needs of our educators and our administrators and our students. So thank you for leading the helm, Darren, and picking up a lot of extra stuff, and I know you don't know what you don't know yet, but we're here to help you through it, and we will do what it takes to continue to support you and the IT department. So thank you to your team and to your leadership.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Darren.
Congratulations again. Thank you. I recommend item 7.2, an overnight field trip, to take our Southview High School dance team to the UDA High School National Dance Competition at Disney World in Florida, and that trip will take place in January of 2025.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 7.3, which is an early childhood partnership agreement. This partnership agreement is a new item, but you will continue to see it each year. We have established an opportunity to memorialize the agreement between the Slovenia Community Services and how we are partnered to run our preschool at Northview High School, and to make sure that the roles and responsibilities are more defined as we continue to work together to strengthen the program and to provide support for our families who participate in this childhood, early childhood program at Northview.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you. I also recommend item 7.4, a preschool program handbook for the 24-25 school year. Again, this will be an annual item, and we will seek your approval each year.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tiberzki.
Thank you. I will recommend items 8.1 through 8.3 on a consent agenda basis. 8.1 are licensed substitute teachers. 8.2 is a licensed administrator sub, and 8.3 is licensed extraduty.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 8.1 through 8.3.
I'll second. Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes. Thank you. I will recommend items 9.1 through 9.4 on a consent agenda basis. 9.1 are classified personnel changes. 9.2 are classified resignations. 9.3 are classified new hires, and 9.4 is a classified separation of service.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 9.1 through 9.4.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. I will recommend items 10.1 through 10.3 on a consent agenda basis. 10.1 are licensed supplemental positions for the 24-25 school year. 10.2 are non-teaching pupil activity contracts for the 24-25 school year, and 10.3 are some changes, corrections, and resignations for the 24-25 school year.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 10.1 through 10.3.
I'll second. Comments or questions? Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, we are on board reports. Greg, do you have anything to report?
Um, so since our last meeting, I've had a Sajard and a rec meeting. Not much happened there, but I did, at the rec meeting, they handed out some interesting information about participation numbers from our elementary school students in the rec programs, which I sent to everybody. About 50% of all elementary students participate in at least one rec program, which I think was, that was pretty cool. That's a good number. We had a master facilities plan meeting, progress meeting, so we just kind of got a general update. I don't think there's much to report from that. And then we had the TIF meeting. Were you gonna touch on that, or?
I mean, if you, if you want, talk, I sent the email out.
Okay. Yeah, so I think everybody got that email. So that's all I have.
Julie?
Okay, we had a Slovenia Prevention Alliance meeting. A lot, the film festival is still gonna be January 23rd, which I do highly recommend going to. It was very entertaining last year, or earlier this year. They are rebooting the Walk of Light, which they haven't done since COVID, and it is scheduled to be October 23rd, which will be Red Rip kickoff, and it's like the last day of state testing, apparently, so everybody's either gonna be real tired or real excited. So look for more on that. Went to Northview, the, well, the summer musical that the association, or the parent group, along with the Slovenia Arts Commission puts on on Saturday night, and it was, honestly, it was fantastic. Like, I was choked up twice.
I thought I was in New York.
Yeah.
Honestly. It was New York.
Like, I honestly choked up twice, and we all know I'm not super emotional, and it was, it was, it was really, it was fantastic. Also, did the Hall of Fame lunch-dinner sort of thing. Very well attended.
Yes.
286 people, or 200, it was really well attended. That, I think, is all I have.
Kim? I have nothing at this time. I don't have anything to add. Greg covered my meeting. So that moves us to public participation for non-agenda items. Is everyone signed up who wants to sign up? Okay, for public participation today, we have several peo, quite a few people signed up. When your name is called, just come up to the podium. You have three minutes to speak. State your name and address before you begin speaking. First, we have Dan Greenberg.
Dan Greenberg, 4654 Vicksburg Drive, Slovenia. Members of the board, the vision of Slovenia Schools is to be the leading district in Ohio, and one of our core values is community. As the discussion of the PE waiver policy has continued, I can't help but think about the shared responsibility we have to achieve that vision and to live up to our core values, and consider how the PE waiver is antithetical to the vision and values of Slovenia Schools. Can you truly say that waiving a course aimed to increase children's mental and physical well-being moves us towards being the leading school district in Ohio? In fact, it moves us farther away. It creates a less rigorous environment for our students. It will decimate an entire program of studies at our high schools. The text of the PE waivers that you are set to vote on, driven by Ohio law, would have allowed my daughter, who was on the golf team, who walked the course through several matches and practiced after school for several weeks in the fall, rarely breaking a sweat, to forego an entire semester of PE. There's no integrity in that, and based on what we know about the mental and physical benefits of exercise, the waiver would not have done my daughter any favors. And what about the core value of community? The waiver policy, coupled with our open campus policy established over a decade ago because of financial problems in the district as a means to reduce staff, moves us farther from community and closer to commuter campus. Unlike every other school district we have researched during the PE waiver discussion, Slovenia Schools allows students to come late and leave early. With this PE waiver, students would not be choosing between engaging PE classes like yoga or weight training. They would be choosing between PE class and going home for the day. What are you going to choose if you're 16 years old? Right now, we have around 40% of our upperclassmen district-wide who are flexing out. This number will certainly increase with the implementation of the PE waiver, diminishing further our sense of community. As I mentioned earlier, we have done some investigating of this policy in other districts. Every single administrator and teacher we talked to said this policy has negatively affected their school. They used the word "decimated" to describe the impact of the policy of, on their PE department. Decimated. How can you vote to implement a policy that has been universally panned by educators across the state? PE waivers are a solution looking for a problem. They are true, there are truly only a handful of students each year who are unable to fit PE and all their other classes into their nine-period day, or fulfill their PE requirement through summer school. So for that handful of students, you're willing to decimate a program, cost multiple teachers their jobs, nullify the benefits of PE for hundreds of students annually, and move our district further from our established vision. Please vote no on implementing the PE waiver policy in Slovenia Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. David Briggs?
Well, I've gotta follow that, which will be rough, so I'm just gonna shoot from the hip in my three minutes. One thing that I really want to get across, and I know I've talked to a handful of you about, is fiscal education sometimes gets viewed the wrong way. So I just want to let you know, fiscal education class at Northview High School is constantly evolving. We're meeting the needs of our kids. We recognize needs and we meet them. Our class consists of a lot of activities, and our goal, and we tell the kids, is we're not gonna make a basketball star, we're not gonna make you a track star, we're gonna introduce you to as many activities as possible, with the goal that you'll choose one of those activities, and that's gonna be your thing. That's gonna help you stay fit for a lifetime. I recognize the value of being in shape. I recognize, as I know some of you, I know the value of going for runs. It's time for me to think, for me to plan my day, and taking this out puts, devalues physical activity. A few things that we do in our class, and, and we put an equal sign next to this, and I'm gonna pick on, on the dad's dance, or the show choir aspect of what we're signing here, because I know we don't have a show choir. So try to put an equal sign to this. Here's what we do in our class. We play tennis, pickleball, ping pong, badminton, the only thing I wrote down. Badminton, ultimate frisbee, disc golf, golf. We go for walks, we play soccer, we play football, we play kickball, we play basketball, we play volleyball, dodgeball, speedball, gaga ball, weightlifting exercise, bodyweight exercise, plyometric, stretching, yoga, meditation, water safety, we dance, and self-defense. Okay? That's our curriculum. That does not equal show choir. And that's what you're telling us, that's what you're telling them. So I think that's something you need to tackle when you're thinking about it. The mental health aspect, we're gonna touch on, and we have definitely touched on in our program. In fact, we dedicated a day called Mental Health Monday, which we had today. That's where we address the needs of our kids. We, we open a dialogue, which is important, in a setting that deals with mental health. And physical activity and mental health go hand in hand, and as I'm sure a lot of you know. So it's heartbreaking to be that, when cuts need to be made, this is the first place we look. I've been teaching for 20-plus years. I'm used to it. I've tried to develop a program that, you know, we talk about, let's make it so dang good they can't. And I think that's where we are.
Thank you. Ben Steele?
So when we were kind of met, and we kind of brainstormed as how we wanna go about this, we weren't even sure if we really wanted to bring the teacher aspect and what it's gonna do to our program. We really wanted to keep it student-focused. But I mean, make no bones about it, it's gonna affect our program, it's gonna create, it's gonna affect our school morale as far as rifts and displacement go. Over the past week, I've contacted various districts to get an understanding on how this waiver has impacted other PE programs. And to be frank, the results are troubling. For example, Clay High School teacher said, "In 42 years of teaching, it's the single worst thing that has ever happened to his PE class." It's reduced that high school from, from a staff of three teachers down to one. Whitmer High School, which is nationally known for its strong PE program, has gone from 10 electives of PE programs down to three, lost a PE, PE teacher, with more cuts to be expected, and that's just in two years. Bowling Green High School stated that their PE program is nearly wiped out, their class size is so small that playing any team sports in class are unfeasible. Perrysburg said, wrote back in capital bold letters, "Every student who can opt out chooses to do so." I talked to administrator, they want it to be anonymous. They said no one at the school wanted to have the waiver, but the board decided to vote on it anyways. It reduced the staff, and they described it as a sore subject anytime anyone brought it up. One of the common defenses of the waiver is, it frees up freshman, student schedules. But I have a hard time believing that's a real issue. I've spoken with counselors, and they said less than 5% of freshman students have scheduling conflict that prevent them from taking PE. Not to mention, we offer summer PE. In my own homeroom, I asked how many students flex in or out. 10 out of 18 students said that they flexed, they flexed out. I understand there are some parents who might support this waiver. However, I see it very similar to the same policy we have with banning cellphones in class. Some parents might actually prefer to have their child to have their cellphone at school or on, or in class, but our focus should be creating policies that prioritize students' education and overall well-being. If a student's were in robotics club, would you let them opt out of math class? Or if students was in debate team, would you let them opt out of English class? So I ask you, why should PE be treated any differently? Before you cast your vote, I urge you to consult with educators and administrators from other districts who have implemented this waiver, like I have today, because your decision you're making will have a lasting impact on our PE program and students' education. Thank you.
Thank you. Macy Wamsher? Hi, Macy.
It's okay. Take your time. Take your time. We didn't, wow. Sorry, guys. It's okay. Take your time. I believe that gym class should stay because it's just important. Like, it's a time where we get to spend, we get to exert our energy throughout the school day, whenever we aren't sitting in class and, you know, just meticulously writing down things all day long. Just because people are exercising outside of school, doing a sport or an athletic activity outside of school does not an excuse for them to not have to do exercise inside of school. It's not too much exercise, you can't have too much exercise. There's not a reason that they shouldn't take it. Gym, it, I've played so many sports in gym that I would never play outside of, like, I would never even attempt outside of gym. Golf, I would never go golfing on my own. I don't have golf clubs. It's not something I would do. Badminton, I wouldn't play badminton. Yoga and, like, going to the gym, we go to the weight room, that's time, we're learning things, like, learning how to do yoga and learning how to use the gym equipment in a way that I would not go to the gym and, like, teach myself how to use the weights. I wouldn't do that. That's nerve-wracking, that's scary, but if we do it in an environment where everyone's learning together, it's good. It is, takes the nerve off of doing it. And then being able to opt out of gym, if you don't have the people who are in gym who enjoy gym, who wanna be there, who wanna do the things, gym is not gonna be fun. It's not, because if you have a gym class filled with kids who don't wanna be there, not saying that all kids who don't play sports and do athletic things wouldn't wanna be there, but I feel as though a majority of them would not, then it's gonna be a bunch of people who don't want to do gym and will not participate in the activities like it would be fun for them to do. From personal experience, it's just a more enjoyable environment whenever there are people trying to play and trying to do all the things and showing everyone that it's okay to just have fun, because gym class is fun. It's fun. I know that some people don't agree, but I think it's fun, and I think that it's a good thing for us to keep, and we should keep doing it. Yay, gym!
Thanks, Macy. Hannah Sug? Is it Sug or Sugg?
Sugg.
Sugg, okay.
My address is 4609 Homerdale. Good evening. My name is Hannah Sugg, and I am the proud parent of two Slovenia-Northview seniors. I am here tonight to address allowing students to opt out of I am here tonight to address allowing students to opt out of physical education if they are taking part in sports or music, and why I think it is a bad idea. I have been a teacher for 25 years. I am also a former collegiate swimmer and concert violinist. It is of utmost importance to me that my children be well-rounded. When looking for houses, our realtor was told only Northview because of its pool, excellent choir program, as well as academics. My daughter has been a swimmer since a young age and was most definitely joining the swim team. Looking back now, had she been given the option to opt out of gym, she would have taken it, and I would have allowed it. Sadly, she would have missed out on her favorite teacher, Mr. Briggs. He gave her the confidence to try out for lacrosse, a sport that was not on my radar. As a swimmer, I had no experience with contact sports and never would have encouraged it. After the first season, we became hooked. My son decided to play the next year, and both look forward to playing their final season as seniors. My daughter also suffers from an anxiety disorder. While all teens can feel anxious at times, she has a diagnosed disorder. Every day, she is full of worry. She battles an inner monologue that tells her she will never be good enough and that no one likes her. Sometimes getting out of bed is impossible. Mondays are the hardest. One teacher made it easier. Mr. Briggs and his moose mug Mondays brought a smile to her face. She has always had a rigorous class load. My daughter has also participated in choir and French. She has never had an issue squeezing in classes and would tell incoming students that PhysEd allows a great brain break between academic classes. She even opted for a third gym class, yoga, that was not required. As an educator, I want to point out that sports and PhysEd are two completely different things. In sports, you are mastering one set of skills. Physical education teaches you ways to live an active life and the importance of a healthy mind and body. As a kindergarten teacher, I can tell you in all honesty that children are different than they were 10 years ago. They have a hard time working as a team, following directions, and understanding why rules apply to them. PE allows kids to learn to lose with dignity and to win with grace in a safe environment. So tonight, I ask that you continue to support physical education for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi everybody, my name is Jeff Seaman. I live at 5536 Bonnybrook in Sylvania. I was at the football, or a former teacher, 35 years, retired about 12 years ago now, was a PE teacher at Maplewood. I was a basketball coach, I was St. Joe's Athletic Director for 30 years, and now I have a business where I train athletes, and I've been doing that for 24 years. So, exercise is important to me. I was at the football game the other night, and there was a mom behind me and told me of what's going on here, and said, "Jeff, you got to go in and talk to these people." So that's why I'm here. You know, my friends are here, you know, colleagues that I worked with, and I'm here to help them, but I'm also here to help the community. It has been brought to my attention that you're considering this waiver thing, and, you know, I'm trying to put my head around why you would consider such a thing when, you know, physical education is such an important thing. And I hear things about trying to save money, well, you know, my thought is, you know, if you save a little money here, people who don't know how to take care of themselves on a lifetime, you know, through a lifetime, you're going to be paying for that healthcare cost down the road. I've heard ideas about saving time, you know, the kids through school, they have other opportunities. If you check The Blade today, they talked about the problems of cellphones, you know, get them off the cellphones and they'll have a lot more time. You know, I did a little research, you know, some people say, "Well, you don't need to have physical education, they're going to learn it on their own." They're not going to learn it on their own. I've learned a lot of things by talking with people who've shown me how to do things, and, you know, I want to spread that with the people that, you know, I'm around in the community here. You know, one of the big things for me as a physical education teacher was to teach people to learn how to love moving. And that's something that not everybody's going to get if they don't have a teacher show them how to do that. You know, you think that they can do it, they're not going to be able to do it. There's a couple other points that I want to make. One is, you know, I know the boards, one of the reasons I think you're considering this is because other places are doing it. Well, when I started teaching back in the late 70s, early 80s, I remember one of the accepted board practices was to let people smoke on campus. And, you know, we know that's not good now, and I think people looking back on this kind of decision are going to say the same kind of thing. You need to teach people how to love to move to keep them healthy. I talked with one of my friends, a guy who's in the business of exercise science, and one of the points that he made to me was that it is now known that 95% of the deaths from COVID were from people who didn't have appropriate aerobic capacity. So, you know, one of the things that, you know, we need to teach people how to stay healthy, because it's going to be a problem. You know, the last thing I want to say was, when I was walking in the hallway here, there's the banner, and it tells about different things, you know, what to do. And it says, "Do the thing because it's right, not because everybody else is doing it." And I'm going to subject that to you folks. You know, there's other communities doing this kind of thing, but I don't think it's the right thing, and I hope you reconsider that it's something that, for the good of our kids, for the good of our, you know, parents in the community, I think physical education is very important. I remember people would always say to me, "Oh, you're going to gym class?" And I said, "Excuse me, physical education? I think this is important, and I hope you guys reconsider." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Zach Korlowski, and I live at 5071 Main Street. I wanted to start by thanking you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I was at the board meeting two weeks ago, and just wanted to compliment all of you on the accomplishments that you've put together. I was so thoroughly impressed with the mental wellness aspects that we're looking for with all of our students, and all of the resources and time and effort that we're putting into that program. Which confused me when this was brought up, because in my mind, the mental health and wellness of our students works in concert with the physical health and wellness. And in my personal opinion, I think that one of the major issues that PE waiver misconstrues is physical activity as physical education. I coached high school soccer at Springfield for seven years, and I can tell you that PhysEd was a valuable resource to me as a soccer coach. And as a coach, seeing my players, I was able to talk with their gym teachers and see how they were doing. Sometimes the gym teachers would bring up, you know, health or emotional issues that they were dealing with that they wouldn't otherwise open up to me. And I see that us diminishing this, or even entertaining the idea of a PT waiver, does not bring Northview as one of the leaders in the district, it does not help accomplish our goal. In doing some research, there's actually a very interesting article, and one of the schools that addressed this was Why a Missing High School in Pennsylvania? And I would strongly suggest that before any of you make a decision, you also look into this program. Because while most of the other district around this high school went through and added the PE waivers, what they did was they went to look at what other classes they could offer to their students for their own well-being. And as Mr. Briggs pointed out, there's yoga and weightlifting classes, and I know that Sylvania has offered weightlifting programs to help with coaching staffs where you can input your weightlifting program and allow your athletes to do that. So it's taking less of their time outside of school. I'm also concerned about the lack of diversity in PE classes if you allow your students who participate in a sport or other extracurricular activity to opt out. We're diminishing the diversity of a class, and I have a hard time understanding how that benefits the student body as a whole. I am very proud and very enthusiastic about the direction that this school is going, and I am, as a parent of two children, my four-year-old just started preschool today, very excited for us being in Sylvania. And I genuinely believe that a PE waiver is a detriment to our students, a detriment to their physical health, and a detriment to their mental health. And I wholeheartedly believe that if our goal, as it is, is to be a leader, not only in the district but in the state, that this would be a major, major letdown for us. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tracy Donnelly, 7165 Nissen Road, Curtis, Ohio. As a physical education teacher, I teach yoga, I'm teaching Principles of Officiating, I teach lifetime sports, I teach health, and I also teach the PE1 class that is also offered. Last board meeting when we were here, you had the vision statement of Sylvania Schools up on the board, and it really touched home, because as an educator, I'm passionate about what I do, which I think is what you want from your educators, to be here in Sylvania Schools, to be passionate, not just showing up and doing their job every day, but to truly care about their kids and what they do. And your vision statement, I truly believe, is something that Sylvania Schools is. We are one of the leading schools in the state of Ohio, and I truly believe that. And every day when I go home, and we talk about it at home, I tell my family, I love working in Sylvania. It is one of the best places to be, and I hope that I will be able to retire from Sylvania, even though I have 12 more years to go. I have to ask, with Sylvania Schools' vision being the leading school district in Ohio, how does the PE waiver align with that vision statement? I think it's completely the opposite. Being a leader to me is someone that doesn't follow the path, but rather creates their own path. And I believe that Sylvania Schools are the leaders in the state of Ohio, but I believe that allowing students to opt out of an opportunity to improve their physical, their mental, their emotional, and their social health is a step in the wrong direction. If we want to continue to be the leading school district in Ohio, then we should encourage our students to do more for their own health, not the opposite. The waiver does not support Sylvania Schools' vision of being a leading school district in the state of Ohio, and I hope you can consider to opt out of the PE waiver so that we can continue with our PE program. Thank you.
Hello, Anna Kraus, 5844 Bear Creek, Sylvania. As you can see, I'm winging it, because I wrote this super-long speech and then found out about the time limit. So, so I'll just take some quick points from it. I reside in Sylvania with my husband and four children that all go to Sylvania Schools. I also am a special ed paraprofessional at Northview High School. To go along, I don't want to pick on my, I have an eighth grader, second grader, sophomore and senior. I will stick with the sophomore, he's gentry, he's a multi-athlete at Northview High School. This year, he is taking two AP classes, three honors classes, two gen ed classes, including his required PE, and he still has a study hall. He has, there is plenty of opportunity for these Sylvania students, which I'm entirely grateful for, especially for a child like that. Moving on from opportunity to relationships, my senior, Kylie, has not had PhysEd since her sophomore year, yet she says Mr. Briggs brightens her day, or the fact that she can go into his class and do physical education with everyone, playing volleyball, not serious. She's someone who is competing all the time. When you're in PhysEd, it's a fun game. It's not to win or to lose, it's fun, and they need that. Moving on to the special ed, physical education is so important in this special education world. It is the one class where I watch the most inclusiveness, and the gen ed student and the special ed student are 100% the same. If I was to take a special ed student into a health class and they needed assistance on a project, I'm going to be working one-on-one with that student. When I walk into physical education with a special ed student, I watch them. I watch them play basketball, I watch them play volleyball, I watch them golf, I watch them swim with their peers. It is the most, they need that class to thrive. And you may say, "Well, we're just making it an option, you don't have, it's still going to be there for the special ed." But they need their peers, they need the athletes, they need the band members, they need their peers in this class, and I truly feel that if this waiver goes into place, over the years, we're just going to see the numbers of PE diminished, because a lot of children are going to choose to flex out rather than take an extra course. I see that happen from day to day. As far as us saying PE, it's important to think that it stands for physical education. That's what it is, it's education. And I just have the hardest time trying to figure out why any school district, especially a school district as amazing as Sylvania, would ever choose the option to opt out of education. So I ask you to please consider that when making the decision. And I thank you so much for your time. I love Sylvania, I love Sylvania Schools, I'm grateful every day to be in this community and work in this community, and have my children in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Emily Bretelson, I reside at 4157 Drummond Road, Toledo, Ohio. I'm actually here speaking on behalf of Kate Payoff. She wrote something that she wanted to share that she felt was really important, and as a speech therapist, working with special needs kids, I can absolutely 100% agree with what she has sent in, so I'll just read that. She says, "My name is Kate Payoff, and I am an intervention specialist and coach girls' basketball at Northview. I think that I have the best job in the world because I get to serve our moderate to intense population of students. This unique population of students has a range of abilities, but just like every student that goes to school, they want genuine friendships. At the high school level, PE classes are one of the only opportunities for my students to foster those genuine relationships with their typical peers. The proposed PE waiver will drastically reduce the number of typical peers that my students are able to interact with on a regular basis. These interactions turn into real and honest friendships. In fact, one typical peer who happens to be an athlete met my student in PE class last year. They talked every day in class, chatted in the hallways, and became real friends. In fact, the typical peer showed up at my student's birthday party this summer. I can't imagine the smile that was on their face. PE at Sylvania Schools is more than exercise, it's a thoughtfully crafted curriculum that creates opportunities for students to learn and connect with each other. As a coach, I know that athletes, band members, and dancers are natural leaders in the school environment. Without them in our PE classes, I fear that all students will lose out. My students will lose access to peers that are leaders in PE, and typical peers will lose the opportunity to learn about and be friends with people that have significant disabilities and differences. The proposed PE waiver is a disservice to all of our students at Sylvania Schools, a district that has shown leadership in education across the state. Thank you."
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brian Helminak, 38-
Hello, my name is Brian Helmaniac, 3820 North McCord. I've been a PE teacher in Sylvania for 10 years. I'm a Sylvania grad, a current resident. Sylvania is my home, my parents' home, my children's home. I'm here to request our members of the Board of Education to reconsider allowing PE waivers in Sylvania Schools. Physical education in schools has never been more important. Based on information from the CDC, US students in 2021, 42% of students felt persistently sad or hopeless. 29% experienced poor mental health. 22% of students seriously considered attempting suicide. And 1 in 10 attempted suicide. Approximately 1 in 5 US children and adolescents are obese. More than 2 in 5 US adults have obesity. Heart disease has been the number-one cause of death in America since 1950. These detriments to our society are caused by poor eating habits and sedentary lifestyles. Our goal as PE teachers is to introduce a variety of sports and fitness activities so our students, our children, can find something they enjoy, which will get their heart rate up and raise their self-esteem, so they can live a healthy, active life and reach their full potential as lifelong contributors to a global society. According to surveys taken in Ohio from the Society of Health and Physical Education, children who have PE are 2.5 times more likely to be active adults. And 91% of parents feel there should be more physical education in schools, particularly for addressing obesity. Participating in a sport or an activity that does not involve sitting in a chair does not meet the ODE (Physical Education Standards) that our PE programs abide by. If scheduling restrictions and lack of opportunities are the concerns that led to considering PE waivers, we should allow our students to meet the two semesters of PE required throughout their four years of high school instead of forcing them to take them their freshman and sophomore years. The Sylvania Schools' mission statement is based on our belief in the whole child. We should not allow physical education waivers which sacrifice a valuable opportunity to improve physical and mental health of our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jill Urbaniak?
Jill Urbaniak, 4225 School Road, Temperance, Michigan. Physical education teacher in Sylvania Schools since 2001. I currently teach elementary, but I brought some letters, two from students, two from parents from the high school level. Dear Ms. Galdees, so this is prior to me being married, I wanted to thank you for making my last year of gym really fun. I mean it. This year was great. I love that we didn't play dodgeball. I never did like that game. I always somehow got hit in the face. Let me say that really hurts. Well, I was just writing you this note so that you know how thankful I am. You rock. Haley. Dear Mrs. Urbaniak, I just wanted to say how much I miss your class. I am happy I had you as a teacher. Your class was probably one of my favorite last year because you were such a great teacher. I hope to see you in the halls soon. Keep up the great work. Also, thanks for being so understanding about my anxiety. Claire. This one is from a parent, and it's, it's not written easy to understand, I guess. By the way, the comment, compliment you made to him really made him feel good. He is very self-conscious about his size and his body. I won't remember exactly, but it was something about his muscle tone. Thank you. I wanted you to know how important our words impact our kids. Nothing I say seems to have that level of impact. Not making the basketball team did a number on his confidence, especially when they told him he was physically limited. Thanks again for all you do. And this one is also from a parent. I wanted to share with you the different ways that Casey has applied to real life what he has learned in your class. Casey has always been active and worked out either at school or at home. He has older brothers who work out regularly and has followed their example. But he has never had an organized plan, and lately, he's been following one that he's written up. Knowing that you've had him do this in your class, I'm sure that's where he got the idea. His younger brothers in seventh and fifth grade have even printed out a program for themselves. Casey also never played badminton before gym class, but asked us to get a net because he likes it so much. We did, and they have been playing out with his brothers. The last one was in reference to Physical Education Standard 3A. There's 17 standards that we teach and assess. Sports coaches, band directors are not teaching those standards. And like they said, obesity in Ohio, 38% of adults are obese, which is way too high. And that's one of the highest in the United States. So please do not offer a PE waiver to our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Creach?
Hi, I'm Ryan Creach. I live at 5025 Greenspruce Drive in Sylvania. I, I can sit here and talk forever about the research and why the PE waiver is wrong for our school system, but I know I only have a little bit of time. So I'm just going to share a couple things. First of all, I know somebody mentioned our mission. Our mission is accomplished through our core beliefs in the whole child: inclusivity, collaboration, community, and continuous improvement. These values support and guide the district's vision to be the leading school district in Ohio. The ASCD is a global education organization focused on empowering educators to advance and elevate learning to meet the needs of all students equitably and wholly. So let me just read something from this article. "The evidence is clear. Decreasing time for physical education does not significantly improve academic performance. Consequently, in an education climate that demands evidence-based instructional practices, the policy of reducing or eliminating school-based physical activity programs cannot be justified. Although the relationship between physical activity and academic performance requires more research, available evidence suggests that the academic mission of schools may be better served by providing more opportunities for physical activity. In fact, controlled studies strongly suggest that engaging in physical activity throughout the school day makes students more focused and ready to learn. Giving students breaks for physical activity throughout the school day can significantly increase on-task behavior. A study conducted in North Carolina elevated the effects of a classroom-based program that, for 12 weeks, gave students daily 10-minute breaks for organized physical activity. Researchers observed students for 30 minutes before and after each break. On average, the activity breaks increased on-task behavior by 8%. Among students who tended to be the least focused in class, the breaks improved on-task behavior by 20%." And I could go on and on. Now, I know that most people know that I am on this crusade to get rid of phones in our school day. And I can tell you without question, not limiting phone use and then taking away physical activity in our schools is wrong. It's wrong for our students, it's wrong for their mental health, it's wrong for the leading school district in Ohio. I've been an educator for 30 years now. I've coached for 35. I have daughters that I raise in this district, and I'll tell you right now, girls are at the most danger of these two things that I feel strongly about. Self-harm, suicide attempts are up 146% since 2015. How is this going to help us? Because I have been here so long, and I've been in education so long, I am an educational, developmental expert. And I hope that you listen to all these people and me when you consider this PE waiver. It's wrong. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anna Drake Coats-Cotts?
Anna Drake Coats, 2218 Old Hickory Lane. I am one of the SCA vice presidents, and as an organization, we often advocate certain positions or policies. And I find myself wishing I had a crystal ball as I worry about the long-term consequences or ripples created by our decisions as an organization. Today, I find myself wondering what effect adopting a PE waiver will have on the district's ability to make necessary cuts in the event of a failed levy campaign. Just 43 of the 90 districts in Ohio with a levy on the ballot this past spring were successful in passing their levies. If the district institutes a PE waiver, will it find itself in the untenable position of needing to cut sports and marching band that are now tied to graduation requirements? What canofers will that open? Will the cuts instead come from our academic extracurriculars or the elimination of programs such as elementary gate art, music, PE, increases to class sizes? I don't envy anyone up here the tough choices they will have to make in terms of levies, budgets, and cuts, but I wanted to highlight something that occurred to me that could potentially make those decisions more complicated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jim Maisy?
Jim Maises, 4349 Candlewood Lane, Sylvania. I've been a teacher and a coach here for 36 years. I graduated in 1981. I was an athlete, nine years of football, nine years of track, six years of basketball, and I have the scars to prove it. I still coach, I'm the head track coach, still coach, just left practice, football practice. To say that the athletes don't need physical education, that's amazing to me. The athletes, varsity sports, played basketball for Bretelson or Seaman. It's not always fun. Played football for Maises. It's not fun lots of times. Fridays, you might get a payday, but most of the time, it's work, 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 work! Gym class, sorry, Kelly, physical education class. Be kind, be safe, have fun, be active. Buy in to one thing, put it in your heart. You have to be active to be healthy. You have to be active. You do not have to be an athlete to be active. In fact, like I said, I got the scars to prove it, most sports are pretty dangerous. Lots of sports cause all kinds of injuries, all kinds of overtraining, all kinds of stress and anxiety. Win, win, win! That's what sports are. That's not what physical education is. If you would have been in my class, ninth period, and saw 30 students in their first day of pickleball inside because it was too darn hot outside, you really don't necessarily tell the athletes from the non-athletes as they rotate partners and introduce themselves and have social interactions with people outside of their friend group, outside of their team. I wish you'd have seen the smiles. I wish you'd have seen that. I'm telling you, when people leave our classes, they feel better physically and emotionally than when they got there. That's priceless. And we're talking about taking that away because you play varsity football? There is no comparison whatsoever, and I've been in both worlds for longer than any of you have been doing this. So I can't imagine that the school system that I've been proud to be part of for all these years, the number one, that's what we want to be, and we're going to take that away? My grandmother, the most important person in my life, was a teacher for more than 50 years, started in 1915 with her twin sister. I have a family of teachers, and she believed the kids have to move around during the day to wake them up and perk them back up again, put a smile back on their face before they sit down again and study and grind and do the things that might not make them as happy. Kids are happy when they leave my class in most cases, and I know they are in these people's cases. A lot of people did this a lot better than I did, and they're, I mean, you've got PhD Jeff Seaman out there. You don't listen to him? Oh, my goodness. So there's no comparison between playing a varsity sport and going to physical education class. Those people need to be together, they need to smile together, they need to have that social interaction, especially because of COVID. It's a judgment-free zone. It's a safe zone. It's no stranger danger, you can talk to everybody. I've been here a long time. I hope you change your mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, before we, we do have someone else signed up for public comment, but before we move on to that, is there anyone else who wanted to speak on the PE waiver specifically? Okay, quite a few of you referenced studies, things like that. Feel free to send us that information if you'd like us to consider it. Our email address is around the board webpage. Thank you. And Jill Johnson?
I thought it was going to be, I thought it was going to be at the end of the agenda. So this is not about PE. This is about saying a formal goodbye to the school board. It's with very mixed emotions that I resign my position as vice president of the school board. It's been a challenge, it's been educational, it's been fun, and sometimes trying, but that's okay because that's what makes the world go round. I just didn't want to walk off the stage and out of the school board's realm of... I'm a loss for words. Obviously, I didn't prepare any remarks. I just, I didn't want to leave what I think is a great group of people that affect our school system in a very, very positive way. And people elected me for a reason, and I feel somewhat sad, and I hope I haven't disappointed anyone who did elect me. I did my best and hopefully made some positive roads through the school board. And I just, I am going to miss all of you, and I just wanted to say goodbye formally. So goodbye, take care, and I'll see you around. Thanks.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Jill. Okay, I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
It's fine.
Wait, is that your session?
Yeah, you're fine. You're good.
I, I'm going to move that we go into executive session for purposes of considering the employment of a public employee. Need a second? I'll second. We will not be taking action after executive session. Adam, can you call the roll?
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yeah.
Greg?
Thank you.